I'd like to welcome you to the September 23rd City of Warham and Regular Meeting of Council. I'll start with a couple of announcements. Our Fall Cleanup 2019 began today. The south side of Central Street, September 23rd to September 25th. North of Central and west of Centennial, September 26th to September 30th. And north of Central and east of Centennial, October 1st to October 4th. Does anyone else have any announcements to make? Hearing none. If I can have an approval for the agenda, Trevor?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the September 23rd, 2019 Regular Meeting of Council.
Do you have a second here? Counselor Philip Chuck, all in favor? Okay, moving down to approval of minutes, motion please. Counselor Philip Chuck?
Make a motion, the minutes from the September 9th, 2019 Regular Meeting of Council are adopted as read.
Then a second there. Counselor Jones, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, first item is Administration Report, starting with our City Manager.
I have one item we worship, irrigation agreement. Earlier this year, the Legends Golf Club had contacted the city to determine if we would be willing to include with the existing contribution of one-third power costs, chemical costs, and winterization. Also, a portion of bringing the water from the river to the golf course, which for our portion would be about $4,000 addition. That would bring our total to approximately $13,000. As a result, Administration committed discussions with the Legends Golf Club regarding the feasibility of having an agreement with a set amount, not involving the splitting of invoices. And that way, the club would have a guaranteed income and the city would know exactly what the costs are going to be each year. The results of those discussions were the development of the attached agreement, which is for a six-year period, 2019 to 2024, with a starting cost of $10,500 for 2019 and 2020, with an escalation of $250 a year from 2021 to 2024. It is recommended that the city endorse the service agreement recommended by Administration.
Okay, we have a recommendation in front of us, motion please. Counselor Beck, a second there. Counselor Schramm, is there further discussion?
Would you like me to read the motion?
Yes.
Okay. The council endorses the service agreement between the City of Warham and the Legends Golf Club for the supply of irrigation services.
Okay, is there further discussion there?
I would just add that further to some of the discussion we had at the Committee of the Whole, I did talk to David Semitasek, the course manager, about the communication importance of that before, you know, we lose access to water for our facilities. He was very supportive of making sure that communication.
Good, good. If there's nothing else, all in favor? Okay, good, thank you. Moving down to Finance Manager.
Good evening, Mayor Spence and Council. The item I have for your review today is the vacation entitlement policy. It had recently been discovered that for the past number of years, there have been two policies on record with the City of Warham. And the policy in practice had not been the same as the policy that what we found had been approved by council. To clarify, just to clarify the above vacation entitlement and per approved versus practice, on the anniversary date of an employee's eighth year of service, they will begin to accumulate that fourth week of vacation. The recommendation is that based on the practice in place by the City of Warham over the past number of years, as well as the policies of comparable municipalities, Administration is requesting a resolution of council to support an amendment to the vacation policy to adjust the number of years of service for vacation entitlement.
Okay, do we have a motion, please? Counselor Schramm?
I picked the long one. I move to support an amendment to the vacation policy to adjust the number of years of service for vacation entitlement to the following. Vacation entitlement, three weeks for under eight years of employment, vacation entitlement, four weeks for under four-eight, under sixteen years. Vacation entitlement, five weeks for sixteen, under twenty-four years. And vacation entitlement, six weeks for twenty-four years and up.
Do you have a second there for that? Counselor Peterson, further discussion? Counselor Beck?
So, just for clarification, like this here, it doesn't actually change anything with how we're doing it?
It doesn't.
It just clears up the wording.
Exactly, yes.
So it's not like it's an actual change in policy, it's just...
Exactly, right, right.
No, I just wanted to make that point, not that anybody was to take away something...
Yeah, it's a change in approved policy, I guess, but not in practice, yeah, exactly.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, planning. We've got a lot here.
Mayor Spence, members of council, a couple of items for discussion tonight. The first is a subdivision of a commercial lot at the Stonegate Development. Planning and Development has received a request to approve a subdivision of a parcel in the Stonegate Development in order to accommodate the new Dollarama. The Dollarama is currently under construction and intended to open later this year. The subdivision will not change or alter any of the existing access into the site. It is only intended for ownership purposes and the site will remain one cohesive site. I have attached a plan of subdivision and an aerial photo. No servicing agreement or rezoning is required for the subdivision.
Okay, so we have a motion in front of us. Counselor Philip Chuck?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the subdivision of part of parcel G, Plan Number 102, 173, 419, in southwest one-quarter, Section 7, TWP 39, Range 4, dash W, Third Meridian, Warham. The subdivision will not change or alter any existing access into the site. It is only intended for ownership purposes and the site will remain one cohesive site.
Okay, do you have a second there? Counselor Jones, any discussion?
Just, the one picture shows on the back, yeah, the south side of that is really a lane off the Colva South, like off Meridian Lane is...
Part of our requirements under the zoning bylaw is that we provide a minimum of 15 meters for street frontage. So to ensure that the subdivision would be approved at the provincial level, and we had to actually meet that requirement, so that's why we did the 15 meters on the end of the Colva South there.
So does that throw any problems in future with traffic going through there or...
No, no, it's still intended that primary access would be off of Centennial Boulevard and through Stonegate Boulevard.
Okay, anything else? Counselor Beck?
So, if I do recall correctly, the St. Andrews Lanes, that's actually snow removal that's going to be done by the city, right?
Yes, yes.
So does that play a part in terms of this unit, you know, being subdivided?
No, the purposes of this subdivision are at the request of the developer, and it's basically for some of their financing and how they finance different phases of the subdivision. The snow removal and maintenance of St. Andrews Lane won't change. The one where we actually share 50-50 maintenance costs and construction costs is with Pebble Beach Boulevard, and that will remain the same moving forward as well.
Okay, so I suppose a follow-up question to that is, with any, you know, tax incentives and that kind of whatever, because it's now going to be a separate property, is a separate application now going to be required for that?
We've always treated kind of the Stonegate as one cohesive site, even though there's kind of different subdivisions based on some of the ownership. For example, the home hardware and the grocery store individually owned and not owned by Stonegate. The Dollarama will remain owned by Avitex in his lease. The subdivision, again, isn't to change that ownership on the land, it's more for, my understanding is, their financing purposes. But the actual building will be an Avitex building leased to Dollarama.
And the only way for them to achieve that financing is by doing this, is there any other alternative?
I mean, typically, we don't get too involved with the financing aspects of these projects. It was a request of the developer, it didn't really alter any of our plans or change any of the way we would do things with the site, so Planning and Development didn't see a huge concern with it.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor?
The second item tonight for discussion is Bylaw 2019-14, Tax Incentive Policy. In mid-2019, council tasked Administration with reviewing the tax incentive policy related to new commercial properties. Council wanted the policy reviewed to determine if it was still achieving what the initial intent was. On August 13th, the city held a meeting with representatives in the development community that included the Warham Chamber of Commerce, KH Developments, Avitex Developments, Crystal Clear Developments, and Kessler Agencies. Information provided to the committee has been attached as Appendix C. Discussion was held regarding the current policy, issues associated with it, and what a future policy may look like. Kind of the consistent message that we received from that meeting is that any policy be transparent, consistent in approach to business, assessment-based or some sort of tangible number that is consistent, something that includes new investment, both in terms of new construction, but also renovations or significant additions, and that an application process, if any, should be clear and available to everyone, or no application process at all, just any new commercial businesses fall under an assessment based on X. Based on the discussion held at Committee of the Whole, Administration created a draft bylaw based on the following two points. Retaining the existing policy, review assessment amounts and criteria, and provide an application form to any commercial or industrial developer or builder, ensuring it is open to both new developments and renovations of existing. And we've attached a copy of that bylaw as Appendix D for council's review tonight.
Okay, so we have a motion to give all three readings. Do we want to start with the first reading? Counselor Schramm, a second there for that? Counselor Jones, and there's... Oh, sorry, you should read it first, yes.
I move the Bylaw 2019-14 Business Tax Incentive Bylaw. This bylaw is intended to provide a framework for council to encourage and foster business development in Warham through the use of property tax exemption agreements. Be read at first time.
Okay, and Counselor Jones, second that? So we'll put that onto the table, is there comments, questions? Counselor Jones, or Counselor Jones, Counselor Philip Chuck?
I guess, just clarification, that in a lot of ways, we almost ended up with what we started with before, with different thresholds.
Correct, yeah, if council will recall, we previously reviewed the threshold amounts and took a look with the new construction values and kind of the construction pricing out there. We came back to council with those new amounts. What we, the other thing that basically we changed is taking some of the criteria out, just in terms of some of the criteria that I guess would make someone ineligible for the tax incentive, because we heard that that criteria creates a situation where you may have winners and losers. So basically, we have a very similar policy to what we started with, with updated assessment amounts and some of that criteria that kind of excluded some, but included others, taken out.
Counselor Peterson?
As stated in my email earlier, I'm not in agreement with this policy, because if we're taking out the application process and just, you don't have an incentive policy anymore, what you have is a tax break for wealthy builders. And I don't think that's the business that City of Warham should be in. I'm okay with giving tax breaks for builders if they go through an application process and do so before beginning construction, but doing it without an application and doing it, and even considering being retroactive as well, is not something I can be in favor.
Okay, other questions, third comments? Counselor Beck?
Yeah, you know, as far as just being retroactive, honestly, this year, you know, for me, I'm like, I certainly don't have a problem, you know, with that there going forward. I do say, though, that the application should be a requirement. Even though the city's not using that to, you know, to explain, you know, or, you know, let's say, to show to the public and whatnot, having that paper trail, I think is very important for a municipality in terms of having that. So that way there, it's not just, you know, I'm like you pulling, you know, something out of the air, you actually have a written, physical document for it. And I think the only way to, you know, to certainly keep that, you know, that standard is to have the application actually there. So, you know, so I definitely support the change that, you know, that the application does remain.
Yes.
I would support that as well, because we had a, you know, Richard's comments, that we didn't have the policy in place for a while. I do think we need an application as much as, because I don't know how else you would ever have the ability to say no to somebody a long time from now, that might have missed it. And I think that is an important piece, and I think a pretty, you know, if we can have part of our process, a way to make sure every building permit gets an application, or we help that way, and I know that there's a little bit of danger with that too, that you might miss it. But I think that having an application is better than not having an application. And I do support where we ended up with it, you know, and I would say I kind of come full circle after this and the stakeholders and really thinking about the community and the fact that the market should drive what, you know, where people are going to invest their dollars, you know, and what we're doing is really trying to give a bit of a nod and provide some incentive, some help to people who are willing to invest into the community, but not trying to pick winners and losers, as you could get into. And I think that, you know, through discussion we've had here, it certainly leaves us open enough to look at opportunities that might come our way that we have to, you know, if we have to get together as a community, as a council, to address those at that time, we have the ability to do that. So I think we ended up in a good spot and had the right people at the table to talk about it.
Okay, anything else? Counselor Two?
I was kind of wondering, just that we're possibly giving this all three readings in council tonight, would we not get some benefit from, because we did sort of actively engage some stakeholders to get some feedback on what the final draft looks like before we actually put it through? So I think I'd like to see that piece happen too.
Okay.
Yeah, we could definitely do that, and I would add that I think if we are going to add in some sort of application process or form, that maybe Administration just internally have a bit of a discussion about how best to do that, so that we are ensuring that we're hitting kind of everyone and making sure that we're consistent in that approach. So, you know, I guess, not telling council what to do, but it might be helpful to take another look at that process, and we could engage the community at that point.
Okay, Counsel Philip Chuck?
I also support just first reading tonight, and then, I don't know if it'd even be withdrawn, if it's first read or withdrawn, but the application with guidelines, that there is a point where you can't, like there is a deadline. And I guess people that are looking for incentives are also, there's some responsibility there. And whatever it might be, people that seek them out and really need them to be able to open a business in Warham, they have some responsibility with that too, like all other programs that are out there in many ways. We're not talking about an cumbersome application, we're talking about something that's there that still follows our guidelines, because it's something we can look back at as we maybe want to make changes in the future and want to be competitive with the region.
Okay, so do we want, was there any...
I just have a couple of comments regarding the application process, and certainly from, you know, speaking to different developers, and of course, what we heard at the meeting, I was on the conference call, but I heard the expression that, that was a big one. The application process was a big one, because if they didn't get the application in, didn't apply for it, then they wouldn't receive it. That was huge. And I've heard that a lot from the developers, that now, council's question to us administratively was, well, did you hand it out? Did they get it? Did they not get it? Who got it? How was it handed out? And I guess that's one of the reasons why we would like to see the processes. If there is no criteria, then, you know, you don't have to actually have an application process. You want a paper trail, you can certainly send a letter out after it's been, in each year in which there's a new assessment, you could send a letter saying, you know, here's your new, here's your new tax incentive based on the new development. But I just felt that there was a lot of concern from the developers, one, of the criteria that was in it, and two, that the application, that if they didn't apply, why would somebody get it if they applied? And then if we didn't happen to apply, why wouldn't we get it? So I just, I want to be clear that it does come back on Administration to potentially be the fall person if somebody didn't apply, that Brad didn't get the application out to him, because that's what we heard. So that's a concern from Administration.
Counsel Peterson?
I don't think it's Administration's responsibility to give out applications. I think it's incumbent upon the developer to do their homework and see if there is an application and ask for it. And if they don't do that, that's got nothing, that's not Administration's responsibility and it's not council's responsibility. It's on the developer, it's on the builder to do their homework and get that ahead of time.
Any other comments? Counselor Beck?
Certainly, you know, for me, like regarding, you know, the application, you know, to me, that is absolutely necessary, that a declaration be made by, you know, by the, you know, by the construction company or whoever's actually developing that. And really with this year, it's no different than filing like your federal or your provincial, you know, let's say, your income taxes, where, you know, I'm like, all of the deductions are certainly payable to you, but there again, you still have to sign, you know, basically declaring that, you know, that all of the actual deductions that you are claiming are certainly relevant to you. And I think that that policy should be, should remain consistent for everything that we do here. So to me, that is important. I do certainly understand, like, the pitfalls of, you know, the Administration aspect, but as long as we have internal checks and balances on that, you know, then we would be doing our diligence and, you know, and whatnot. And I don't know, from a council perspective, I don't think we would, you know, necessarily hang out, you know, you know, let's say, hang the issues that, you know, that might arise on the Administration. So, you know, and that's just my thought to this year. I definitely like to see the paper job.
Yeah. Did you, Counsel Peterson?
I'm just kind of wondering if, am I interrupting you for a moment? I'm just kind of wondering if maybe during the development review checklist kind of thing, so we get the application, or not the application, but we get the building permit application back, and somebody signs off on that on behalf of the Administration, right? Could there potentially be an option to add, you know, was there, was the application offered? And sort of have that check and balance built into the process? And I don't want to suggest that I know the best way to do it, but I'm just suggesting, can that be built in somewhere?
I think there is processes in place before, and that's what these developers are relying on now, is I didn't provide an application because I had one before, so why would I have to apply again for a new development? There was also, we know for a fact that the, it was going out with the building permits, but not necessarily was the developer picking up the building permit, it was the contractor person building it. So I guess, I mean, we can certainly, I just want it brought to council's attention that that was one of the biggest issues was that they had when they were having the discussion with the council that night, was the application process. That, and some of the comments here, application process should be clear and available to everyone, well, it is, if you ask for it, or if you fill it out, or no application process, just any new commercial assessment gets an abatement based on X. Now, I understand council is saying that the direction that they want to go is an application process, and I don't have any problem with that. I just want it clear that that's been the problem, one of the major problems in the past for the developers.
So, Counselor Schramm?
Where's the communication breakdown between developer and the office, different places? Is it because of...
It would depend who you talk to, and I guess that's exactly my concern, is I don't think there's any communication breakdown. I think what I'm hearing from some of the developers is that they applied and they put an application in, let's say, in 2014 and received a task concession, they just thought they'd automatically get it. So I guess it's kind of the, I don't know if there's miscommunication, it's more of their understanding was they got one last time, why wouldn't they get one this time? And they didn't fill out an application because of that. There's, council's seen correspondence on that, there's just a letter sent.
So I'm hearing that council would like an application process, so if we can turn that back to Administration to come up with something that will be proactive and seamless and not complicated and cumbersome, and bring it back to us. Do we leave this first reading on the floor and then the application will follow? Okay, okay then, all in...
I guess, I'm the one who made the motion, so I guess, to me, the application process is, I think it changes a little bit of the intention of what we're doing, based on the intentions of this...
Do you want to pull your motion?
So I will maybe pull my motion.
If I, just, sorry, I prefer to the city clerk, but I think you can still get first reading and then amend it, and then bring it back for second reading and third reading if you wish at the next meeting.
There's lots of instances where we'll do a first reading on a bylaw, do some engagement, some changes will come forward with the second and third.
So...
Okay, I will keep it.
On the floor. Okay, so the second there, we've had the discussion, all in favor of the first reading?
Thank you.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Spence, members of council. I have a number of items being brought forth in tonight's meeting. The first of these is the Curtain Project at the Brian King Center. The project was initially approved within the 2019 capital budget. Unfortunately, once we came back with more specific pricing on the project, it became clear that the project was going to be significantly higher than what was anticipated. The department did try to do some application for funding through cultural programs, but those were not successful. Therefore, you have a recommendation in front of you.
Okay, who wants to make that motion? Counselor Schramm?
I move to approve the transfer of the Brian King Center Curtain Project from the 2019 capital budget to the 2020 capital budget.
Do you have a second there for that? Counselor Beck, any further discussion?
So, regarding that then, you know, in your 2020 capital budget, is it only going to be, you know, let's say, the difference, or is it going to be the full amount?
No, it's going to reflect some of the more accurate pricing that we did get.
Okay, yeah, so that will be for the full project amount coming through in 2020? What would have been allocated in 2019 would then just be funded to, you know, reserves?
Reserves.
Excellent, thank you.
Anything else?
We'll make sure he cuts something else at least.
Okay, all in favor?
Second item?
The second item I'm bringing to you tonight is the Facility Joint Use Agreement between the City of Warham and Prairie Spirit School Division. The department has known and working very closely with Prairie Spirit School Division to update the original agreement. It now reflects more of what transpires and how the workings of the P3 school. With the school division and the city for usage of the gymnasiums and some of the classrooms, we have worked through a number of copies of the document, and we believe that this document serves both Prairie Spirit School Division and the City of Warham. And you have a recommendation in front of you.
Okay, who wants to make that motion? Counselor Peterson, a second there?
I'd like to make the motion that to approve the Facility Joint Use Agreement with the Prairie Spirit School Division and the City of Warham as presented.
And a second there for that? Counselor Jones, discussion? Okay, oh, Counselor Jones?
Just high level what the changes to the agreement were from the past.
A lot of the changes came with the P3 school and how they're restricted within their operations. A lot of it comes back to, one, adding that school and those gymnasiums into the agreement for usage. Two, comes back to how much time and utilization that we have within that facility, as they are really restricted on replacement values, usage life expectancy of their gymnasium and their floor and whatnot. So that's basically the highlight of it. The spirit of the document stayed the same. The usage, we had an opportunity to meet with Administration of the schools and really express some of our concerns of those long-term events that span four or five extra days, booking two special events through school divisions, both in their gyms and then flowing over into our facilities. So we had a really good communication with that and how that affects us and how it affects my cost recovery of the facility. And we brought in more of the Prairie Spirit School Division, a lot of the original... And we brought in more of the Prairie Spirit School Division. A lot of the original documentation was with the, uh, school board. And now this has more of the Prairie Spirit School Division. So it really reflects their changes too of how they use their, the Brian King Center and the facility for a lot of their, uh, meetings, their overall division bus meetings and things like that. So it encompassed a little bit more, really looked at the P three and how we were utilizing it and how we're going to utilize it. So, but the whole spirit of this, of the document virtually stayed the same. We just made a few amendments to it.
Okay, Counselor Beck?
So just to be sure on the timeframe, you know, this is like a five-year document, you know, not forever, you're, you are happy with those terms?
Yes, yeah, the document itself actually brings forth, um, some of the stuff that we didn't have in it was that a committee would be set up between the city and Prairie Spirit School Division, which would have administration of both parties and then some elected officials on that as well, uh, where we do, uh, yearly meetings, uh, provide yearly financial statements back and forth, utilization numbers, things like that. So we're fine with it.
Okay, all in favor? Next item?
Uh, the next item I have for you was the evening Christmas party, uh, that the city puts on annually. Uh, the department, uh, did a little bit of research and had discussions with, uh, staff and council about where we see the evening Christmas party going or if it's relevant anymore. Excuse me, over the last five years, we've had, uh, we've seen the, uh, the numbers in attendance really decrease and the expenditures of the program continue the same, if not increase a little bit more. So staff were provided a couple of surveys, um, with what they thought, uh, if the Christmas evening party was to stay as it was or if we were to move towards maybe just doing the afternoon luncheon. And, uh, you have in front of you the recommendation.
Okay, who wants to make that motion?
Who's going to be the grant?
So I would like to make the motion that the city council approves the elimination of the evening city Christmas party and continues to host a s- city staff Christmas luncheon.
Okay, secondary. Counselor Philcheck, any further discussion?
Just, I I've got a brief question. The way that the motion's worded, i- is that in the context of like if a motion is worded negatively?
Negative motion?
Yeah, is that with the word elimination in there? Is that worded that way?
No, because because we, because we are approving it. And it says that we are approving it, but it's just that it's actually eliminating a service.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you.
Just one question. Um, regarding the, um, the like the rec advisory, um, correspondence, you know, you know, you know, that is coming through. Is that something that we, that we deal with now or would we deal with that, um, as it comes up in?
In correspondence.
In correspondence, we'll deal with that. Okay, thank you.
Well, that's, it's not, other reports, I mean. Okay, Prior Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Spence, members of council. Uh, one quick and, uh, quick and painless item. Uh, as discussed at the September sixteenth, uh, committee of the whole meeting, uh, we've been given an opportunity with our existing volunteer firefighter insurance service to add on a mental health component, which they're calling the Employee and Family Assistance Service. Uh, the cost of that add-on is two dollars per member per month. And, uh, there is a Western Canadian-based, um, mental health service called Homewood Health that actually has an office in Saskatoon that would carry that, um, that service for them in our area. So that's the, uh, motion I have in front of me tonight.
Okay, who's putting the name on? Counselor Philcheck?
I'll make the motion that employee and family assistance insurance coverage be added to the current volunteer firefighter insurance package at a cost of two dollars per member per month payable to the Homewood Health Incorporated.
Secondary, Counselor Shrum, any further discussion? Counselor Philcheck?
Just, so does a lot of this insurance provide counseling time? Is that, is that where really the money's going in a law or where the insurance is going and is there caps on how much you can get?
Yeah, actually, uh, I discussed this program, uh, with Lynn, our H R person, just to see how compared to what we have for the city. Unlike some of our city programs, uh, most of these are uncapped. There isn't a certain amount of hours with the exception of P T S D where after a certain amount of sessions, then they expect work miss compensation to kick in. Um, and just as a side note, the this price is just about a third of what a city war employee pays for the, for their service.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion to file administration reports. Counselor Tulley?
I'll make the motion to file administration reports as presented to council.
The secondary, Counselor Peterson, all in favor? Okay, moving down to council and committee reports, starting with my report. Most, just for your information, um, I do have one, just have to get to it. One resolution, and that is a resolution is needed for Mayor Spence to attend your voice conference in Moose Jaw on October nineteenth. Who will make that motion? Counselor Philcheck?
Yes, I'll make the motion for Mayor Spence to attend your voice conference in Moose Jaw on October nineteenth, twenty nineteen.
Okay, and a secondary, Counselor Peterson, any further discussion there? All in favor? Okay, is there any questions on my report?
Just on, I got, I was wrong the last time. I I put down that, uh, twelve o'clock, uh, at the school for orange shirt day, it is actually twelve thirty, then it'll be talking. And then it is the round out, so, uh, so we'll be there twelve thirty, so we'll be getting back about ten to one.
One o'clock.
One o'clock should be fine.
All right, perfect. Okay, um, moving on to the youth representative report.
Last week, our Mormon High School S R C had their first fundraiser. We did a bake sale and everybody helped contribute their own baking. All of our fundraising went to Hoops for Hope, which raises money for cystic fibrosis. And Mormon, our school had two teams that played in their three-on-three tournament. And we ended up raising a total of two hundred and fifty-five dollars. Um, we have started our F C C Food Drive for Hunger, which runs till Thanksgiving. And then after that, we're doing another food drive through Free the Children. And both will be donated to local food banks. And then we started talking about and promoting Orange Shirt Day and the Round Dance in the gym on September thirtieth.
Good, terrific. Okay, does anyone have a question? Let's you down. Counselor Philcheck?
Did you go to the S L C conference?
I did not.
You did, okay. It was a leadership conference.
Any other questions? Okay, a motion to file reports, please. Counselor Tulley?
Do I have to read something?
Yeah, there's a motion there.
Motion to file the following, hang on, the mayor's.
Mayor, you can.
Where did I go? Oh, right there. I was just lost where I was. To file the mayor news council representative reports for September twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen as presented.
A secondary, Counselor Peterson, all in favor? Council roundtable, starting with Counselor Beck.
All right, well, I certainly apologize to everybody for for not being, or, you know, certainly for being away at last council meeting. Um, I was actually in, in, uh, for the N W M O, so that's the Nuclear Waste Management, uh, um, Organization. So, uh, so yeah, with this year, um, basically this year, um, each or, you know, you know, it's like every three years, uh, uh, the Canadian, uh, Nuclear Association, um, it basically hosts, you know, it's like an international conference. Uh, so that was held in Ottawa. And, uh, with this year, along with that, I actually had the opportunity to tour the N P D plant. So that stands for the Nuclear Power, um, uh, uh, demonstration. And what that was, it was the very first, you know, Can Do reactor actually, uh, created here in Canada and whatnot. So I had a chance to tour that and 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 look at, you know, the, uh, the actual de, uh, decommissioning process of that. So, uh, it was, it was absolutely a, uh, fascinating week to be in Ottawa. So yeah, so it, you know, certainly passed on, you know, you know, certainly why I wasn't here. To go on to some of the, uh, you know, uh, some of the things, uh, that I've been involved with since last council meeting, uh, the S U M A, uh, board meeting, uh, uh, we did have that just on Friday. We have some, uh, some exciting things to announce, uh, with S U M A Advantage. Um, it's actually opening up ten new engineering service lines. So with this year, um, you know, so now, you know, communities, you know, can certainly access, you know, you know, ten, ten different engineer, ten different engineering services, uh, where where the R F Ps would already meet, you know, like the, like the criteria here for Western Canada. So, uh, we're certainly, uh, you know, trying to, uh, you know, support municipalities in terms of, you know, getting quality engineering, um, you know, certainly affordably and, uh, and with with quick timing. So, so that's, uh, something to be rolled out here, uh, just in the very near future. Uh, regarding the actual meeting itself, uh, we had lots of discussion, a lot of governance, um, uh, you know, discussions. We, uh, were looking at convention twenty twenty. There's going to be a lot of things, um, you know, happening in in Regina this year, uh, you know, come February. Um, we had, uh, a rebranding project and whatnot, so we would have, uh, some, some announcements, uh, from that at, uh, convention. And, um, uh, we also, you know, started looking at our budget process. So, uh, with this year, there's going to be a series of things coming forward on that. One of the other initiatives to point out is, uh, S U M A will be hosting a federal election forum on September twenty-sixth. It's going to run from nine A M. to eleven A M. Uh, so representation from from, um, all, uh, federal par- uh, parties. I think the only one missing is going to be the, like the block Quebec walk, uh, but everybody else is going to be represented. And, um, they're going to specifically address hometown concerns and how that relates to, you know, to the party's platforms and whatnot. So, um, you know, so that there would certainly be interesting to, uh, to certainly, uh, you know, to certainly check that out. To enroll in that, it is free. So, you know, so that's, uh, that's one of the new high marks that, uh, you know, that S U M A is, is going for, uh, you know, for all of their volunteers. One more point of interest, um, and this would be for the P four, uh, you know, the P four G. Is, um, there's expressions of interest and now it's for the T S S. So, you know, uh, so that's for the, uh, for the targeted sector, um, uh, support. Um, so in, so anybody, you know, exploring regional collaboration, um, or inter-community programs and whatnot, um, the, the applications are are certainly able to be filed prior to September thirtieth. So if that is something that P four G is going to look at, uh, you know, like there again, this, this kind of fund is is certainly addressed right to that. Um, it is funded to one point five million dollars from, uh, you know, from the, you know, from the provincial, uh, reserves. So I I definitely wanted to highlight that for administration and also for, uh, any of the block and.
I think it's on the agenda.
Yeah, it is.
So, um, yeah, so, uh, that's what I wanted to bring forward, you know, uh, for what I've been up to.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jones?
I attended the Legends Golf Course Board Meeting since the last, uh, last council meeting on September nineteenth. Some observations from that is really good to see, you know, on the expense side of 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 the, uh, of their management focus, they're actually making some handways. So stuff that they can control, that they're, they're doing a good job trying to control. Get through a few more nice days and they might end up having a pretty good year there, uh, combined with what they're doing on the expense control. Some things might see, they just ordered the new golf carts. And again, another nod to paying attention, you know, they are going to be, um, without G P S and they are going to be back to gas carts because financially that's a better decision for them to do that. So that's something they've been working through their membership, making sure people understand why. Um, exciting thing was they're going to be hosting the Saskman's Amateur and the Mid Amateur. So anyone that's familiar with golf, um, that's the big amateur tournament in Saskatchewan. It's the best golfers from Saskatchewan golfing that are at it. So they're going to spend three days at our golf course and there'll be some coverage and stuff associated with that, which will actually be really good for that golf course. So, and speaks a lot to the level of the golf course for them to come by and play that. So, really good. Um, their A G M is this October the twenty-second, that's seven P M. So anybody that's a member, come on out. Um, I'm on the strat planning committee, so I'll have a bit to say about that. And then I'd like to thank Aaron, we're going to put together something else on behalf of the city. Couple of times we get to go up there and say something. And then finally, just the Member State Planning is starting, uh, next week. I believe is when we're going to have our first meeting. So usually a couple of weeks before that event, and that's always an exciting event, uh, to be a part of because it's so well done and so well attended here.
If it's not cold?
Yeah, if it's not as cold as it was the last. Yeah, but, yeah, so that's it.
When are board members selected? Is that at this A G M or the spring line?
It is this A G M.
Okay.
It is this A G M, so there's one for sure. There's one for sure that's all turned out.
Okay, good, thank you. Counselor Tulley?
I, uh, my apologies too for missing the last council meeting. I was, I was in Niagara Falls for, I was a work-related conference, but it also has a little bit of spill over. It was, I was at the International Association of Assessing Officers Conference, which, um, I think was the largest conference that they've ever had. Uh, it's a yearly conference. There's fifteen hundred or so delegates that were there. From pretty much across North America, but also internationally, there was, I think, a, a group that was from Korea, uh, that was there. Um, so lots of good sessions, um, you know, pretty much every session that they offered, they had six or seven different streams you could go to. Uh, so there was lots of variety and lots of different things to go learn. And that was, um, from Sunday to, what was it? Uh, Sunday to the Wednesday of not last week but the week before. Yeah, so that kept me away for a few days and that's really all I got right now.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Peterson?
Uh, I guess I had the, uh, library board meeting last week and, uh, we had Sherri Wood from twenty twenty accounting there to, uh, talk to the board about, uh, uh, how she's put together the, uh, financial packages for the, for the board and keeping, keeping the books. And I have to say the, the board is taking very seriously what, uh, council's request to clean up the, the way the finances looked. And and it, it shows, I think, with when you, when you get the next set of, of, uh, meeting minutes and the, uh, financials that go with it, you'll, I think, be quite impressed with the, with the work that they've done to get that under control, and it looks really good. Yes, there is, there is one issue they, they kind of, financial issue they took care of as part of that discussion that, uh, corrected, uh, something that, you know, uh, for the board. And, uh, you know, talking about, uh, getting started on the, uh, budgeting process at the ne- uh, the next meeting to, to, so that we're ready for the new year instead of playing from behind. So it's going to be tackling that in a more timely fashion. That's all, you know, uh, stuff that they've, they've really listened to council for, for making, they're making some positive steps forward.
Good. Okay, thank you. Counselor Shrum?
I always like going this way because I always am able to say things before Gary does. Because he always beats me to the punch.
Well, it's your turn.
It is my turn, so I'm, uh, I, I am thankful to the opportunity to serve in this capacity. And, uh, in the last, uh, since last council. Um, I, uh, was at the trip, uh, the trip road, three eighty-four meeting with our, our, uh, city manager and with Counselor Peterson. And, uh, we met with Council of Martinsville and the R M in talking about that road. And it is still in, uh, in consultation and decision. Uh, went to the breakfast, uh, business breakfast, uh, on the seventeenth. And, uh, I thought it was, uh, I haven't been able to go because it's always on a Wednesday, but this time it was Tuesday. So, um, wondering, uh, it was a survey done by our, our, uh, chamber in finding out why local consumers shop outside of our region. And I thought it was a, a really good start. I think that they're, they're passing some more information on to the college, uh, to get in deeper, but I think it, uh, provides, I think it's something that maybe Josh should take a look at. And, uh, maybe we can encourage our businesses somehow with that. Also, uh, volunteer appreciation, we are still working that through. And, uh, we are able to see some success through, Dawn has done a great job in organizing and pulling out all the stops and, uh, looking forward to see how this all comes together in April. And I think it will be a good event in celebrating and honoring those that volunteer in our city. Um, other than that, I do have a question about, uh, to the manager in regards to, there has been some break-ins in, in new builds out on, um, out east of Glen Abbey. All tools were stolen. I, I, that area needs some R C N P presence. There's lots of, there's cars, you, this was done in the morning. of cars, there's cars. This was done in the morning. They, the, one of the owners came by our home to see if we had seen anything. It was somewhere between twelve and four in the morning. Um, so I just, uh, I think.
Yeah, I'll check into that. What morning was it? And it was reported?
Uh, yeah, I believe it was reported. Um, uh, it was, uh, Wednesday, last Wednesday. But so it couldn't Tuesday night or something like that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Philchuck?
Well, a couple here, uh, to add on to, uh, Councilor Shram's. Uh, had a chance with a health store grand opening. It's the Warm and Nutrition Health Food Store. And meet Belinda Lee, the, uh, owner and a couple associates that gave me the tour. And I wanted to get a few pictures themselves. And, uh, it was very good. Well done. Had lots of food and everything there. So, uh, really, and there's actually quite a few people there. When I went, I went at one o'clock and it's surprising how many people were there at that time. Also, the business before my, uh, before nine, just thanking Doug Ramage and, and Jamie for putting that together, that report. Uh, their sample size is small. I, I think that that's, that's something they look at, but surveys are tough to get people to do them. And, and, uh, I think it's, it's reaching out and maybe they'll look at other opportunities and they're going to try this same survey at different places throughout the province and looking at why people are, are shopping or not shopping in Mormon. Uh, the Prairie Rivers Reconciliation, uh, a couple of things with that one. Had a chance to go through that. That was just the Tuesday after our last council meeting. And they had a treaty simulation there, which was really quite interesting. Uh, it was, they, they, they created a complete scenario where Martians were landing and you had to come up with, your group had to come up with what are the, the things that you need to really protect? Because things were going to change. The, your way of life is going to change. So really, if you have a chance in any sort of conferences or openings, and I know it's even at the reconciliation conference that they have Linden Link letters doing something like that. It really does give you that global look at, at that. And really, a good sample with some of our youth are getting things like Native Studies Thirty right now too. And I have a motion because we're getting the honor of hosting the, uh, Prairie Regional Reconciliation Committee, uh, MOU signing. Uh, they were looking at different places around and, uh, and, and we're looking at Monday, November fourth, and it's going to be at the Brian King Center. And I'd like to put forward a motion that we provide the rental of the Brian King Center in kind. So, so it's the PRC signing on Monday, November fourth at the Brian King Center with the rental provided by the city of Mormon in kind. And I'd put that motion forward.
And a seconder? Councilor Tulley, further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Anything else?
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving down to correspondence. We have in front of us the, uh, Mormon Fire Rescue Dine and Dance. And I think we have a motion there. Council, Councilor Jones?
Make the motion about table for eight to the Mormon Firefighters Two Thousand Nineteen Dine and Dance Event at the cost of three hundred dollars.
Do we have a seconder for that? Councilor Tulley, further discussion? Okay, all in favor? And we also have the RCMP and media report that is, uh, attached. Do we have a motion for that one? Councilor Peterson?
I'd like to make a motion to follow following correspondence for Sep- for September twenty-third, two, twenty nineteen, as presented to council. The RCMP media release, Mormon Firefighters Dine and Dance Event poster.
Okay, a seconder? Councilor Philchuck, any further discussion there? Okay, all in favor? Okay, moving down to other reports. We have in front of us the Rec Advisory Committee Report. Uh, I need a motion there. Councilor Shram?
Uh, a motion to approve and file the minutes from the Recreation Advisory Board Meeting that was held on September the fourth, twenty nineteen.
Okay, and a seconder? Councilor Peterson? And comments, questions?
Yeah, um, certainly this year, like there are, you know, it's like a number of recommendations made, um, you know, coming, you know, certainly stemming from this particular, uh, uh, meeting. And I was wondering if we might be able to have a discussion about some of them. Um, you know, certainly the, um, you know, like the one that, uh, you know, certainly strikes me the most here is the, uh, the recommendation to, um, put, um, you know, let's say, uh, like the requirement for, for one of our, um, groups to actually put out no parking signs. Um, and, and, you know, with this year, what the recommendation, you know, from the board is, is that, uh, that, uh, that Mormon City Council, you know, basically support the, uh, oh, uh, I'm this here, sorry. Yes, I'm, I'm actually lost it here.
Okay, it's, it's right up here.
Oh, perfect. So, um, you know, certainly with this year, the, um, you know, you know, to put it on our groups, you know, to actually put out no parking signs, um, you know, with this year, and like I, like I do think that that is, you know, certainly precedent setting in, you know, in terms of, you know, whatever event might be going on, you know, that would, let's say, exceed, um, let's say like the local, you know, parking capacity where, where it's now upon them to actually, uh, you know, put that out. Um, and, and, you know, with this year, you know, like I'm not suggesting that, you know, that the city should take responsibility for that. But I'm just wondering if we might be able to do, um, like a little bit of investigation and certainly like a little bit of study into whether or not this is like the most feasible way, you know, until let's say go about this. Um, you know, so with this year, I mean, like I think that there, there might be, you know, some other ways to, you know, to let's say calm traffic, um, and, and certainly warrant, uh, like a bit of a traffic discussion. And I know, uh, I think we're waiting on a report for, uh, let's say, traffic counts, um, and, and how, um, you know, traffic migration has certainly moved since, you know, since the implementation of the, uh, of, you know, of the overpass and whatnot. So, um, I would like to see a little bit more work, you know, behind this before, you know, before that there, uh, does get approved.
Well, let's hear from Paul because maybe he can give us more background on, on this one.
The item itself was not part of the original, uh, agenda that went out. This was, uh, uh, an issue that was brought up at the meeting by, uh, two of our advisory committee members. Um, when the discussion happened, there was a discussion about, um, their SAS Cup event that they host and how busy it was and how well attended it was, but how unsafe it was with traffic being on both sides of the street. Um, they did make mention of their regular race nights, which is Tuesday night, that they were having some of the similar issues, but on a smaller scale. Um, there is no official parking lot over there. Uh, there is a small one. Uh, apparently they have spoken to some of the business owners over there and those business owners have, uh, made it clear that their parking lot is available for them in the evenings and on Sunday when their businesses are closed and it doesn't affect their business operations. Um, the initial discussion came forth with, uh, putting no parkings, permanent no parking signs on that side of the street. And then it eventually washed out to come down to asking the c- club to put out six sandwich boards that have no parking during event on this side of the road. And having the club put them out hours before their race day, usually in the morning, so that people are moved and gone from that, that side of the street, um, instead of doing something that was more permanent.
Okay. Um, so are we talking just, are we talking just big events? Are you talking all events or what are we talking?
They're, they're talking that they would like to see it as part of their Tuesday night race night.
Oh, I see.
And then their big event, which is the SAS Cup.
Their, their Tuesday night, uh, they get probably it's out, it's from my discussions with, with them when I was at that event. They said that on Tuesday nights they get about, you know, two-thirds to three-quarters the numbers that they get at the, the big event. So they, they get a really good turnout every Tuesday. And so it's not like it's a quiet event.
Brad?
Just to Councilor Beck's point, um, we are going to be bringing some recommendations in terms of the TMP back to the next committee of the whole. That area wasn't an area that we're specifically looking at in terms of those recommendations. Um, however, we can take another look at if Recreation Council would like us to. Um, in terms of, you know, traffic calming measures and those types of things, there's lots of studies out there that actually the best way to slow traffic down is by narrowing the street up and having parking on both sides. I get some of the concerns around, you know, kids darting between cars and maybe not having the same visibility aspects of it, which we could maybe deal with, with some of the parking around the crosswalk areas. But, um, there has been quite a bit of data provided where narrowing up the street or giving the feeling that the street is narrow is actually kind of the best way to slow traffic down. So I, I just throw that out there as like a consideration, but.
Okay. Councilor Peterson?
So, um, one, one thing that might be well, well advised to do then would be some, some curb painting, some yellow curb painting, no parking painting around the city crosswalks. Like, just to reinforce, you know, that you, you're not supposed to park there?
Yeah, and then first like, uh, it's, uh, a little late in season this year to do any painting. So, um, we could definitely, you know, if the direction given by council and, and an agreement with Parks and Recreation for next year is that we could definitely look at some of that for our spring painting program.
And to be, be clear, this wasn't brought forth by the club itself. Um, this was an issue that these two gentlemen that actually sit on our, my advisory committee have children that participate in that. So the season is from May to the end of August. Um, and they race every Tuesday night. And then the SAS Cup, they'll host the SAS Cup every year here. Um, so it, it might be worthwhile for us to monitor it next year and see what it does and, and make sure, you know, the, uh, curb painting happens and whatnot. But there was, we received zero complaints at the department about this issue until it was brought up at the advisory committee.
Okay. Councilor Tulley?
Yeah, I, I would agree. I, I actually was through that area a number of times on Tuesday evenings when they had races going and, and the traffic really, um, you know, it did actually did slow down a lot because the road was really quite narrowed. Uh, so that part, you know, I, I, there was lots of, you know, issues where people would dart across the street, that kind of thing. But where I've got a concern actually is, is sort of handing over the responsibility of closing a road, um, from the city, handing that over to sort of a, a user group. And I, I don't think that would necessarily be an appropriate measure to do it. Um, like if there is a concern and it's something that, you know, should be monitored, should it be like by law out there putting up the no parking signs? And then also they, they potentially be the ones to enforce it. Because right now we sort of say, here Diamond BMX Club, go throw some signs out for us and get yelled at for putting the signs out when people want to park there. So I think it's, we're kind of putting that responsibility on somebody that really shouldn't be on.
Okay. Councilor Peterson, or I mean, Councilor Philchuck?
Just a comment to that one too is that, uh, doesn't that already happen with schools though too? Like where they're taking out their sign for a period of time and then they bring it back in. So, you know, in some ways, some of that delegation to the specifics already happens in a way. So that's what came to my mind right away is that, okay, it's, it's event-driven. Maybe it's there, but I, I look for best practice too. So I'm, I'm curious about that. But that's sort of the common practice even in Saskatoon now with schools and in Mormon too.
Okay, so we're hearing from Paul that we will monitor it next year, see how it's going, make sure that the, uh, crosswalks are painted. And, uh, then if there's still a concern, this can come back to this, to this table for further discussion. Does that sound fair?
Sounds fair. So do you have one question? Uh, so how do we deal with this piece of correspondence? You know, because like, I'm like there again, like are we approving it with?
I think you still approve it, but you make mention in your minutes, um, how, how you're going to proceed with that particular recommendation. Sound rate?
Okay, uh, would I be able to make a motion then?
Uh, well, the motion, we've ma- we've made a motion already. The motion.
Oh, okay.
Motion's been made already and we got a seconder already.
Yeah, I'm, I have a different question.
But so it, it'll just be recorded in the minutes that, how the recommendation is going to be dealt with, that recommendation. Okay, other question?
Just another question about the leisure guide going to paperless. Um, that, that will be quite a change. Is that happening throughout the province and?
You're seeing that slowly come up. We have some communities that are starting to move that smaller cities that are moving to the electronic version of it, simply to cut down on cost.
Absolutely.
And then having a little bit more, uh, awareness of your environment. So the, the intentions of that is to go from, um, we print twelve thousand six hundred fifty copies a year. We're, we'd look at cutting that right down to about fifteen hundred copies. Uh, annually, we spend anywhere between twenty-five and twenty-six thousand dollars. And we believe we can cut anywhere between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars in the budget. So by making that change. The intentions and, and the discussion that we have around that is that we would make sure that our facilities such as City Hall, Diamond Arena, uh, Legend Center, even some of our businesses, we'd approach the, uh, Quop Gas Station and stuff like that to put some of our hard copies in there. Um, we'd really make aware at some of our senior fitness classes and stuff like that, uh, before we make this change that that's going to be happening. And that those, there, there are those people that are wanting to have that hard copy in their hands. They look at it, they register, and then it hits the recycle bin. So we're, we're hoping that with this, we'll post it on our websites and on our social media. We'll even do, uh, bulk mailouts of it. So, um, you are seeing that. You won't see Saskatoon. Saskatoon has made it very clear that there's the print copy. They're still doing it in their surrounding areas. Uh, cities like Moose John Swift Current in New York and are moving that way now.
I, I support it. I'm fine with it. I do like, I was looking at the number though, and I, I do like that there'll be, because I'm thinking of new residents. First place they'll go is the Legend Center and City Hall. And as long as they can get something like that, I'm good with it.
It, it's a need that we still have a limited number of print copies at each facility for those people that are new to town or need to have that in their hands.
And maybe the schools might be the other one where they're taking this.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Um, I, may I, um, make an, an amendment to my motion to include action items for this particular motion? Would that be, so that it is, it is regis- I understand that there'll be action items, but I think.
No, I agree. I was going to make the recommendation they actually be as, ask for an amendment, or you as the mover can amend it. Have a second.
So that's what I would do.
Okay, well, we had, we had a seconder or a second.
The seconder was, uh.
Peterson? Okay.
One, one more comment. There is, there is information here about park naming and does that need to be amended too? Because.
Uh, park naming. What?
Where did I miss that?
Uh, where was that?
This was done before the, our last meeting.
Yeah, not actually in these minutes, but.
It's in this minute, they're in this minutes.
And do I, I do believe the comments were made in this minute and?
They are at the bottom of the second last page or third last page. Recreation Committee, uh, they passed the motion. Or no, it was just a statement, I guess.
Yeah, so.
It's a statement.
That'd be my question is, all of this is just a recommendation to count.
Yes, we would still have to make the motion here.
So, can you not, you can't just accept the rec- because that is the communication. It's just a recommendation. We don't have to do anything with any of it if we so choose it.
Right. I just want to point out because if we're talking what's there when we pass the minutes, that, that's also noted because we discussed that too.
It is strictly an advisory committee. Don't make recommendations to council.
Yeah.
Okay, so you've amended to include the action items? Okay, all in favor? So moving on to under communication, we need Aaron.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, just before we talk about the social media, I was wondering if I could get council's opinion on something. Uh, we've been contacted by the provincial government about hosting some kind of celebration regarding the Lagoon expansion funding. I've kind of talked with Mayor Spence a bit about it and we wanted to know everyone's input. The date that we've proposed is October fifteenth at the regular meeting of council. There's no guarantee the minister can attend, but an alternate will come in her place and I don't know who that is. So I'm not quite sure if this is something we want to go ahead and plan or what everyone's thoughts were on that.
So, welcome to Paul for some discussion. It would be, it's going to be, it would be at our meeting. So it's just a thank you at our meeting. So, but.
Be nice to have a minister if, if they want to come.
Well, it didn't sound the minister would be able to make it.
Okay.
But we know that now.
Yeah, you know, certainly my point of view is, I mean, obviously, I mean, this is, you know, something that we have received and certainly, uh, you know, noting that fact and even celebrating that fact, I think is, you know, something worthwhile. something worthwhile. Uh, you know, it's certainly being included in our, you know, I feel like that's part of our council meeting. I think that would be a good way to integrate. And uh, yeah, certainly highlight to the community the fact that this project will be going ahead and highlighting some of those funds that did come from.
Well, the only that, the only thing that I think about that is, we've already done that. Like the community does know, we've done all sorts of advertising already about it. So, and they've already kind of have had a celebration with everybody in one place, so we're kind of doing it again. But if it's, if everyone thinks that we should do it again, let's go for it.
I, I say anytime the people that are giving you the money want to do something like that, you, you go ahead and do it so that you get a chance to get some money for, for future projects.
Well, they're, yeah, and they're leaving it completely up to us.
Sir? No, on the fifteenth, state day fifteen.
Any, any other comments?
I'm in agreement with Counselor Beck.
Okay, everyone's in agreement? Okay, so I guess we'll plan something for October fifteenth. Okay. For council meeting, for the council meeting, or at the council meeting, or that looks for their department.
Okay, that's good. And next item? Um, so in my report, I just have the usual social, social media statistics. Um, I don't really have anything exciting that jumps out to bring up with you, so if anyone has any input or suggestions, please let me know. So is there any questions of any of those things on the report? Counselor Beck?
So, uh, regarding the uh, Srida uh, race day, you know, obviously, you know, like that does take place on, like on a Saturday. Um, I'm, like, I'm just wondering if there's any way to, uh, you know, you know, to certainly, you know, you know, get um, a photo opportunity from that and, and be able to, uh, you know, to highlight that through our social feeds. And there again, like I know that it does kind of take place on a weekend, which is, you know, it doesn't fall into our regular Monday to Friday hours, but I was just wondering if there's any way to highlight that back.
Part of, yeah, and that was actually partly my fault. Aaron did ask me for some pictures prior to race day and kind of just through the logistics of it all, we uh, I didn't actually get them to race because I was hoping to, so. Um, and uh, we can communicate a little bit better. Future depends on weekends and then try and set something up that make like a little bit better.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
If you would let me know that I, you had to take pictures like you did.
I did actually post it a moment ago. Yeah, there was, because I saw some pictures. Okay, thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion to file? Nurse Porter?
I'd like to make the motion to file the communications report as presented for September twenty-third, twenty nineteen.
And a secondar please? Counselor Shram, all in favor? Okay, under accounts. Do we have a motion? Counselor Phil Chuck?
I'll make a motion. Council approves the city accounts as presented by checks numbered two zero eight five four dash two zero nine uh, seven four for the total amount of three million nine hundred sixty-three thousand two hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty-one cents. And the payroll vouchers numbered eight, nine, five, nine, three, dash two, uh, nine, six, five, nine, in the amount of eighty-nine thousand two hundred one dollars and ninety-five cents for September ninth, twenty nineteen.
Do we have a secondar there? Counselor Jones, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, and a motion to adjourn. Counselor Jones?
Make motion that the Mondays, September twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting of council be adjourned.
Secondar? Counselor Tully, all in favor? Okay, thank you.